And Steve will be joining.
On Zoom.
On Zoom, sorry.
Steve's on Zoom.
Zoom and then David Clark-Berrell. I haven't heard anything. I thought I saw an email from David. I think he was gonna join online too, maybe. Howard's online, Steve's gonna be online.
Steve's online.
So we have four. Jason's online. Okay, so you have three county commissioners online.
Okay. Okay. You're still at, you already recording? There you go. Okay, it is April 22nd and it is 4:02. Go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'll do roll call of planning commission members. Howard Tripp.
Here.
Joey Edwards.
Here.
Steve Stevenson, or Stevens, sorry. And Dave Clark-Berrell. Jason Marufo.
Here.
Okay, and Heather Lynn here. County Commissioners, Commissioner Beedler. Commissioner Munch.
Here.
Commissioner Edwards.
Here.
No changes or additions to the agenda?
No.
Okay. We have minutes to approve from April 8th. Somebody had a chance to review those? Do we have a motion to approve minutes from April 8th?
Edward's moved to approve the minutes from April 8th.
Do I have a second?
Second to motion.
Okay. All in favor, aye.
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 Okay, updates from staff.
So we've submitted our community builders' application for community assistance on a values and visioning process to piggyback on the Building Better Places workshop the county attended. And so this will be, we got the support from the city to go into the application process and we've already gotten a little bit of feedback that things are looking really good. So we're getting really excited that we might be able to work with community builders on kind of our next step as a preparatory step of going into the comp plan process. We are meeting with, we've got several conditional use permits that are in various degrees of completeness review. So we will have some outfittering guide. CUP's coming up soon. And then generally, we've, I think currently we've got 11 or 12 short-term rental licenses available?
11.
11. We've got 11 short-term rental licenses available. So we have filled up some of those, but we're still not wait listing. And the other really exciting news is we are extending an offer to Planning Deputy Director. And so we're really excited. We have a very qualified candidate that we are extending an offer to. And so we're really hopeful that he'll be joining our team in a couple of weeks. So hopefully we'll hear shortly whether or not that is happening. So I think that's generally, Cece, can you think of any other updates that we have in the department? Just gonna say short-term rentals is the big one. 11 standard licenses are available now.
So I think, I think that's about all we have for you right now. And just so everyone knows, David joined on. Okay. All right, we don't show old business, so new business. We have file 24-088, which is the Silver King Plan Unit Development Site Plan Review. And. I don't know if I can get this statement here somewhere to begin that part. Okay. The Lake County Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners will now conduct a joint public hearing. This statement I am reading shall be incorporated into and made part of the record on these proceedings. The Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners have jurisdiction to conduct a joint public hearing on planned unit development without subdivision. This type of application is processed consistent with rezoning under Section 3.13 of the Lake County Land Development Code. Concurrently, the Planning Commission is addressing the site plan review requirement for all commercial uses seeking construction permits. The purpose of this hearing is to consider whether the proposed amendment shall be approved. In considering that matter, the Commission will address the approval criteria set forth in Sections 3.13.3, 3.11.3H, 3.15.3E of the Lake County Land Development Code. The procedure to be followed in this hearing will be, one, members of the Commission and/or Board will disclose any ex parte communications. Two, the applicant may then make their presentation. Three, the county staff will respond with any outstanding items or concerns. Four, after that, any other persons either supporting or opposing the application may present evidence. Five, supporting and opposing witnesses may be questioned by the Commission and the Board. Once questioning is concluded, no further questioning is permitted unless granted by the Chair. Six, the applicant may then present any rebuttal evidence. The parties and witnesses are asked not to submit redundant, irrelevant, or cumulative evidence. If someone has already made the point that you wish to say, please simply say so. The Chair will also require that all comments be made to the Planning Commission and the Board and that there will be no dialogue between the applicant and members of the audience. At the conclusion of the evidentiary portion of the hearing, the Chair will entertain a motion to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing and the Commission will discuss and weigh the evidence. Then there will be a motion to close the discussion phase of the joint public hearing. The Board of County Commissioners will then leave the meeting and the Chair of the Planning Commission will entertain a motion on the application. The motion may take the form of one of the following recommendations. One, approve the application with no conditions. Two, approve the application with recommended conditions. Or three, deny the application. Planning Directors shall make a record of any substantial discussion on the motion and include that in the record with the recommendation of the Commission. The Commission's recommendation will be in the form of a statement of motion. Are there any objections to the jurisdiction of the Commission or to the form or substance of these proceedings? Hearing none, I will now ask each Planning Commission member and then each County Commissioner if you've had any ex parte communications to disclose and if so, please disclose those now. Howard Tripp?
None.
Joey Edwards?
I sit on another panel with Morgan Laught, who is the architect for this project and had a non-substantive conversation with him today, a short conversation. I think I can be impartial without having to recuse.
Steve Stevens?
Uh, no, I'm fine.
Okay, Dave Clark-Berrell?
None.
Jason Marufo?
None.
Heather Lynn, none. Commissioner Beedler, I don't think is here. Commissioner Munch?
None.
Commissioner Edwards?
None.
Okay. Staff may now make their presentations.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I am going to actually ask if the applicant would like to start with their presentation and then staff will provide some comment afterwards. So we're gonna go ahead and let the applicant introduce themselves and do their presentation.
Okay.
All right, I think I'm gonna lead us off. So I am Melissa Kendrick and I'm representing the development team for this proposal. And I'm, I think it's maybe a little bit unusual to have a recommendation to table a project and then to have us present to you. But I think it's important to recognize that for Chris Breen and Matt Carl, they've been preparing for this. And so we did want that opportunity to really present the proposal and let you understand where they are coming from, what the application is about. And then also to be able to hear and really listen in terms of what, what kind of feedback and what direction we may get from you today. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over, I think, to Ann.
Yeah, of course. I'll start out here.
All right.
So yeah, I just wanna thank everyone for taking the time to discuss this project with us today. We've had a great opportunity to work with Lake County Planning, who's spent a great deal of time with us over the past few months to discuss this project to bring it here today. We understand there are a number of outstanding questions that were addressed in the staff report and, you know, we look forward to addressing these items today, but also understand that, you know, we'll likely need some more time to discuss these items, but are really excited to kind of bring this forward and share a bit more, more with you all. So if you can slide over to the next page. So just to kick this off here, a little bit of a project overview and then Matt will jump into the team, a little bit more about the team. But the Silver King PUD, it's a unique opportunity to rapidly increase the supply of workforce housing in Lake County with no financial commitment from the county and a significant unit allocation to local employees. Through adaptive reuse of the Silver King Inn and Suites, this project will have a meaningful impact on housing availability, reduce pricing pressure and provide an innovative unit type to the community. PUD approval will demonstrate Lake County's strong commitment to increasing workforce housing supply. Our proposed project, as you can see here, will take the current building, which is 65 units, and reduce it to 55 units in order to add eight one-bedroom units. Cooking facilities will be added to each room and all units, amenities including a fitness center, storage lockers, communal outdoor space, communal laundry, dining and lounge areas will be added to the building to provide the best resident experience. Throughout the process, we have engaged with Lake County Planning Department to prepare and solicit feedback and submit our PUD since early February. We just kind of lay out a timeline here of the process we've gone through with hopes of beginning construction in the, you know, in the coming months and delivering the units by the fall. You know, we're excited about the potential property, the potential opportunity to bring this project to life.
And I'll just add, you know, thank you to Ann and Cece for all your time and dedication to this project. I know you guys know that it's an important one and the timeline there. Can I show this how often you guys have met with us and gone through the process? So we appreciate all that time and commitment and, you know, pushing this forward, especially when it's a unique project that, and timeline and process that hasn't really been seen before. So my name's Matt Carl, this is Chris Breen coming from Blue Hour, which we are fully focused on workforce housing. Through adaptive reuse of existing properties, we've done this in a number of areas and looking forward to doing the same with Silver King here. You know, we always try to kind of find a max, sorry, a mix of local and national prowess. So we brought, you know, a team of Melissa here and Morgan with shape architecture to bring kind of a lot of that market knowledge and, you know, bringing in a lot of local network, sorry, locals and experts in the area to opine on the construction and permitting process here. You know, we also have brought in, we're also looking to bring in BKW Construction, which is a national general contractor with, you know, over 25 years of experience. You know, they have over 40 million of annual contracts and licenses in over 26 states. So they have a ton of experience with the actual construction here. You know, and for the Blue Hours team, you know, we have a significant experience over, you know, decades of investing in financing of real estate. You know, I've got over $2 billion experience, $2 billion worth of experience of transactions across multi-asset classes. So, and then on top of that, we also know that there's a lot in this building to do. And so we brought on a bunch of, you know, engineers, experts to kind of go through everything, the design, the planning, to ensure that this is a successful project and, you know, things are up to code and compliant.
And just, you know, highlighting as well, there's a few other individuals we brought alongside here. A construction, construction manager who's worked on a thousand-plus unit development, multifamily projects, as well as a nationally recognized design team that's focused on hospitality and hospitality to workforce housing conversions. So really robust team, really excited to be, to be bringing it all together for this project. So we can flip through these, I think you all know very well, but wanted to throw these in here. Focused on the Silver King property located here in Lake County. Some photos, you know, just wanted to highlight here, there's this and another page of photos. We think the property's in really great condition and in prime for adaptive reuse. That doesn't mean there isn't a lot of work to be done by us specifically on the fire and life safety front, which Morgan will speak a bit more about later. But really excited to take this, this great building and kind of bring it into, and re, you know, through adaptive reuse, bring multifamily workforce housing units to the market. So one more slide after this one. So I really wanna focus on four key reasons that we think that this project has a lot of validity. And first, a significant increase in housing supply. Second, the rapid delivery of units. Third, a subsidy-free project. And fourth, a strong commitment to local employers and employees. So first, the increased housing supply in Lake County that's aligned with the Lake County housing goals. You know, we know that Lake County's faced an intensification and acceleration of housing issues in recent years, highlighted by inadequate housing supply, rising prices and challenges with both new and redevelopment. You know, in rural communities, housing needs are often underserved because larger developers sometimes prefer larger projects and smaller developers don't necessarily have the capital to come in and do these projects. Based on our census data, there's less than 1,000 rental units in Lake County and 750 in Leadville and Leveon North. This project is an opportunity to deliver 56 housing units into the market and meaningfully increase the supply of workforce housing, which will reduce pricing pressure. Second is the rapid delivery of units through an adaptive reuse approach. As you know, it generally takes many years to complete new housing development projects, which often limits the financial feasibility of the projects due to prolonged timeline. Given the urgent need for housing supply in Lake County, the opportunity to rapidly bring these units to market, as soon as this fall, will provide immediate supply relief, allowing both current residents to find housing and open roles to be filled. Third, this is a subsidy-free project we're asking for to allocate resources towards, it will allow Lake County to allocate resources towards additional housing projects. We know there's a finite amount of money that Lake County has to spend on housing projects. We believe the county should strongly consider approving projects focused on workforce housing where there's no financial commitment from the county required. Moving, moving forward, this project will allow the county to dedicate those resources towards additional projects in the community. And last, we believe this makes a strong commitment to Lake County residents and employers through the local employee unit allocation we outline. We understand the importance of ensuring that members of Lake County community have access to housing. By creating opportunities for the local workforce, employers are able to attract, recruit and retain talent. This PUD has made a strong commitment to unit allocations and application preferences for Lake County community members when considering tenants and believe this project will be well received by employers and employees in Lake County. For these four reasons, a significant increase in housing supply, a rapid delivery of housing, a subsidy-free project, a strong commitment to local employees and employers, we would urge you to vote in favor of this PUD and help bring these workforce housing units to Lake County. To highlight a few more pieces, we've really tried to take into account all of the Lake County documentation regarding housing. That would be the Comprehensive Plan, the Housing Needs Assessments and Housing Action Plans as three key pieces of this. And in our application, really, we believe does a great job to address all these pieces. I think you all know these documents very well. But, you know, to highlight in the Comprehensive Plan that there really is a push for a variety of housing types and densities that result in lower per land in development costs to make more new housing affordable. In the Housing Needs Assessment, it speaks to increased density allowances that can be critical in supporting the development of affordable housing. And in the Housing Action Plan, they do talk about in terms of eligibility for housing assistance, that they do not recommend Lake County establish a preference policy for resident workers over resident commuters at this time, highlighting among many things, financial fairness to current residents and commute impacts on financing lease-up speed and sales by narrowing Lake County's already small market size to need this more submarket. We wanted to highlight these as we discuss our application further and respond to some of the comments from the staff report.
You know, as part of this application, we understand that there is a huge need for, you know, focus on Lake County. We are in Lake County and wanna make sure that this housing is, works for those in the area. And so we've kind of put it together in working with Ann and Cece and we haven't had a chance to kind of go, you know, what this proposal would actually look like. But having spoken to a lot of our financing sources and lenders and what would kind of be the max feasibility that we think could get this done that wouldn't cause issues for them, we've come up with a few of these different deed restrictions that would be palatable. One of which is, you know, qualifying at least 50% of the units or Lake County residents and people that work for an employer that is based in Lake County. Another 25% of those units being for people in the surrounding, you know, Lake, Chappy Eagle and Summit Counties. And then, you know, remaining 25% open to any of the, any other potential residents that would qualify. But obviously giving preferential treatment to those that live in Lake County or the surrounding counties. And that would be with the first five years. And then after five years, you know, giving at least 25%, or 50, sorry, 12 and a half percent to those in Lake County, 12 and a half percent to the surrounding county. And the remaining being open to all, with again, preferential treatment to those that are in Lake County and the surrounding counties. And obviously, these are, you know, what's kind of, would be, won't be restricted in the deed. But as many of you guys may know, we are working with Climax now on a proposal to actually master lease the entirety of the property. I know Aaron might be here to kind of speak a little bit towards that, but the goal here is at least for the first five years, that this would be solely master leased to Climax pending, you know, final resolution there. And I'll.
Would it be appropriate to tell Aaron to make a statement about this now or should we wait until Aaron?
It's your presentation, so.
Aaron, do you have, I think Aaron's prepared some, a statement about Climax's commitment.
So my name's Aaron Fullsorres. I'm a land and water manager for Climax Colorado, in Colorado. Climax Molitorum's, Climax Molitorum Company's leadership recognizes the lack of affordable housing continues to be an issue in the Colorado counties where our operations are located. This is impacting retention of our employees and our ability to attract new talent to our workforce and ultimately affecting our productivity. As a major employer in the region, Climax embraces the responsibility to be a part of the solution to the broad-based housing issues in our local communities and has been working on ways to address this issue. On the Planning Commission's agenda today is one such example. Climax is in negotiations to master lease the Silver King Inn and Suites. To the extent that it's feasible under the terms of leasing commitment, Climax is open to subleasing to locals, teachers, government employees, first responders, et cetera. At this early stage, Climax cannot specify a set number of units that may be set aside for potential subleasing until after we have identified our employees' housing needs. Any units not occupied by employees will be open for sublease.
Excellent. Thank you, Aaron. So to highlight and add on to that a little bit, we've had a great conversation with Climax and we certainly realize that as Climax, if they do take these units, it will certainly free up a huge amount of pricing pressure in the market as those units would be from other, you know, they'd be looking to find those units in other places in the community. So, next slide, Morgan Laught.
Yeah, I can introduce the buildings. I know everyone here is probably pretty familiar with them. But on the aerial views on the left side and the northeast view, there is the north building on the left side, which was constructed roughly in the 1990s. It's got interior circulation corridor. Currently, no fire sprinkler and does not meet current state PDA requirements. The other building, you can see better on the lower image there, is the primary structure, has a lot of the interior amenities and that kind of connector between the two volumes that have the exterior circulation for the units. There's about 20 units in the north and about 45 existing in the south, including various amenities space. So you can see here over in the site plan, no change to the structures. We've looked at, you know, the various county requirements in terms of snow storage, parking. We are planning to bring the buildings up to code for fire sprinkler accessibility. And also looking at some community amenities as well. So some storage lockers, about 25, I think we're proposing right now for the units, because obviously some of the residential units are fairly small. Then there's also some outside amenities, including a new patio. There's interior and exterior bike storage. We're maintaining some of the existing communal space in that main level for, you know, for the occupants, for them to be able to have a space that's able to rent out and, you know, house bigger events. So I think overall, the, from, you know, an architect's perspective, I think the buildings are a pretty good candidate for what is, what these guys are trying to do and proposing. Again, this is the main building, the older one, 1960s. You can see the first floor there on the right and the second floor on the left. So we're filling in this upper large gymnasium space with storage lockers for the second floor units. We are combining a couple of the smaller units to make them a little bit more usable for more kind of long-term stays. And then downstairs on the right, you can see kind of some of those amenities spaces that are kind of being either maintained or converted to other amenity uses. And then just the difference between the studio units in blue and the one-bedroom unit. This is the north building. We're just, you know, we're proposing to essentially combine two units into one to create one-bedroom unit, the smallest units, just to make that one a little bit more usable.
And then, you know, we've looked into the area and have, you know, this kind of approach of converting hotels and motels into multifamily housing has been, you know, pretty popular, you know, kind of throughout the different counties of Eagle, Pagosa and Durango, you've seen this, you know, taking these kind of more budget hotels, converting them. And they're, from what we can tell from calling them and speaking with people there, you know, these are nearly 100% occupied, showing the kind of need for some of these more efficient units from these conversions.
Awesome. And then one of the last things we wanna just highlight here is, you know, is a unique kind of innovative approach here to the PUD approval criteria, which we, which we work through based on these pieces highlighted here on the slide. And I think the easiest thing to do would be to kind of address, you know, I think there's many areas where the staff, the staff report highlighted that we were in compliance or in agreement or we, we solved for all these different approval criteria. But there were a few areas where there was some areas of concern and we just wanted to kind of bring a few of those up and address those here today and then be able to hear feedback from you all. So one of the areas that was voice so concerned is that we weren't found basically consistent with all parts of the Lake County Comprehensive Plan. Specifically, Statement 1. It was being proposed as 100%, this is from the staff report. It was being proposed as 100% workforce housing project. The applicant has accurately demonstrated compliance with the comprehensive. If, sorry, if this was being proposed as 100% workforce housing project, the applicant has accurately demonstrated compliance with the Comprehensive Plan. Both post-pandemic conditions and contemplated opportunities through Phase 3 of the rail yard PUD are evidence there is a change in neighborhood conditions and provides a compelling rationale for being able to find in favor of the residual approval criteria. However, the occupancy qualifications proposed by the applicant do not provide a benefit to the welfare of the community. Our, what we would like to highlight is that in our view, we do view that adding 42 units of workforce housing in the near term and 14 additional units in the longer term with focus on prioritization of local employees for all of the units backed with a goal of signing a master lease with Climax is that we do think that these provide a benefit to the welfare of the community. We view this as a hugely beneficial project. You know, we would, you know, we would like to understand, you know, the committee's view on, you know, how this does not provide a benefit to the welfare of the community. Second, we would also like to understand just where in the Comprehensive Plan it requires that 100% of the workforce project needs to be 100% workforce housing in order to demonstrate compliance with the Comprehensive Plan. So that's, that's kind of the first area that we would love to have a discussion with today, just to understand, you know, the feedback here. The second area, which bear with me, is maybe a little bit more complicated because you have to navigate around the code a little bit, is that the staff finds compliance with most of the PUD development standards. However, staff cannot find compliance with PUD requirement 6.1.2I. States that the PUD should contribute to affordable workforce housing. Address the countywide shortage of long-term affordable housing, workforce housing through a plan that may qualify the applicant for development incentives waivers, including density bonuses, zoning dimensional standard waivers or the right to apply for a conditional use review for residential uses not otherwise allowed, depending on whether the plan complies with standards contained in Section 6.1.150 or O. So the staff has stated that they cannot find compliance with Section 6.1.15O. There are six pieces of 6.1.150. I will spare you from reading all of them, but we do think that our application, it needs, the PUD plan should comply with one or more. The following is a requirement. We believe we qualify for two. Applicant to construct, construct at no cost to county or regional housing authority, deed restricted units as part of the PUD Applicant to construct, construct at no cost to county or regional housing authority deed restricted units as part of the PUD development that comply with the workforce housing definition and/or other innovative creative development proposal that meets critical housing needs in the community, which we would view this as a innovative creative development proposal meets housing needs in the community, along with the deed restricted units. There is, um, there is one piece of the staff report that I just didn't want to clarify, which was number eight, that we needed under, that states an affordable housing component, let me see which page this is on. Pages, page eleven and twelve. It lists eight items that must be met from Section three point one one point three HPUD preliminary plan approval criteria. We, in our initial application, there were five pieces that we needed to meet, which are one through five listed on the right side of the screen here. The report on page eleven and twelve lists an eighth. There are a total of eight, but we were required to meet these five, and so I just wanted to confirm whether that was kind of added after and whether we should, whether that is something we need to meet as well. That being said, if that is part of the criteria, we do believe we need this because that criteria requests that the proposed ratio of housing workforce units, that the, the commission shall take into consideration the proposed ratio of affordable housing workforce units to the total number in the application. And the proposed ratio, we believe we've demonstrated a good proposed ratio here, suitable. And then the suitability for development and the adequacy of facilities for affordable workforce housing units on any land proposed for dedication. I, so those are really the two main sections we're excited to have a conversation about today. We want to figure out kind of how we can get to an agreement on what we think would be, you know, deemed beneficial to the community, increase the welfare, understand how this fits in with the Comprehensive Plan, and then discuss how this, you know, kind of ratio, what ratios would really be helpful. And we understand we don't want to go back and forth today on percentages and all that, but would love to just hear kind of the opinions of the committee and everyone in the room and then can go from there and, you know, save any huge amount of back and forth, but hear, hear all the opinions today. Thanks again for taking the time to hear this proposal. I know that was a bit long-winded, but we're really excited to be proposing this to you today.
Great, I'm just gonna let you jump into staff report and then we can go into.
Um, let's, can you get my, um, report? So I'll just start off before she even gets that queued up. Um, you know, staff's recommendation is a tabling. We believe that this proposal still needs work. Particularly, we're going to get into what happens after year five. And the deed restriction that's being suggested, and, and let me just back up a little bit. So, um, the, you know, we've attempted to do this through a fast track, even though I know the applicant doesn't think this has been fast tracked, it's been considerably fast tracked. Maybe they do, but, but, you know, so part of what we did was we jumped on board and we controlled, and we created a zoning control doc that really spoke to the guidelines. So those qualifications one through four, you know, staff worked directly with the, our housing consultant and the regional, the executive director for the regional housing authority. And so we came up with those qualifications one through four, which all do speak directly to having a qualifying workforce element to them. And so that was, you know, kind of our, I think that conceptually, we had less probably disconnect between, you know, what staff was hoping that the application would address within the conditions until we introduced the zoning control doc, which really put some qualifiers around what the occupancy of the units would be. And so this is, I just wanted to back just up a little bit. So my presentation is very short and sweet. Just talked about the process. So normally, this would have been a conditional use permit for, to go from a hotel use to multifamily, however, the density was a problem in the business-owned district. It only allows eight point seven units per acre. So obviously, when we have, and I thought we found another unit, I thought we were at fifty-six units on, on a little over an acre. We had to get a little creative in what, what kind of approach we could take. So the code allows this PUD process without subdivision. And so we, we looked to, which gets processed as a rezone, so your findings are rezoned. They also have findings associated with the PUD. PUD was amended most recently to add incentives around affordable workforce housing. And so that's why we're, you know, kind of talking about those criteria that the applicant has some question about. And so I think specifically number eight comes from PUD standards. And so you're talking about two different type sections of the code. So one is the approval for preliminary plan and one are the standards associated with PUD. And so we amended both places. We amended that incentives that we would provide to PUDs would be things like density bonuses, case in point. And, and then some more creative solutions when we can look at a project that does bring workforce affordability into, into the equation. Early on, we did, we're going with kind of a deed restricted light kind of approach in that there is no AMI base either on qualifications for the occupants, nor guidelines for rental rates. So neither of those are, you know, we talked early with the applicant and those are not present within here. We did do this fast track process. We, we got the revision back on March twenty-sixth and we're here, we are on April twenty-second, having a public hearing. So we've gone really quickly in our review. Do I go ahead and put the next slide there? So approval criteria, and, and that's, I'm really going to get to kind of the heart of, you know, where we are today. I think the applicant has identified that, you know, they feel as though they've met the criteria and staff says, still think we have some work to do. So first, we have to make the findings of a rezone. And one of the substantial findings is that there's been a change in conditions and that the rezone bears a reasonable relationship to the welfare of the community. And so that is, that's, that's somewhere that I would say that we still need to do some work. We need to make sure that these qualifications don't have unintended consequences associated with them. Staff immediately sees ways that the, the qualifications kind of having this qualification five and then the, kind of the catch-all that, that there's a paragraph that suggests that there could be flexibility and, and we do recognize that there should be some flexibility in percentages and things like that. But, you know, the flexibility within this statement suggests it's the responsibility of the operators of the facility to ensure compliance with these occupancy requirements. This occupant, this occupancy split is intended as a guideline and should not be considered as an absolute minimum or maximum. Should vacancies exist due to no prospective tenants meeting qualifications one through five, units may be rented to tenants that do not meet qualifications one through five. And again, keeping in mind that qualification number five was added by the applicant and that's at least one person in the household must be a full-time resident of Lake County, Chaffee, Eagle, or Summit County. So there's no workforce qualifying quality to that fifth qualification that was put in. So the addition of qualification five and the addition of kind of, you know, this, if, if we haven't been able to fill with workforce, then we would be able to open it up to any tenancy. Those, I, I think that staff would like to suggest with the applicant that there might be better ways to address some of these. Maybe it's a PUD amendment after year five, after, you know, whether or not Climax seeks to renew their lease. And, and if they have done a must, master lease for a hundred percent for, for the first five years, then why are we doing a seventy-five, twenty-five split? So some questions. Thank you so much for answering the sublet question, subleasing question. Staff hasn't ever seen a copy of the master lease and, and again, didn't know if Climax would allow that or not, but a lot more questions than answers. And so that's one of the reasons. Also is Section six point one point two I. The finding that this does contribute to affordable housing and workforce housing. So keep in mind that this just isn't just a PUD finding, this is a rezone finding. Next slide. So I, I've already kind of talked about this. This qualification number five, at least one person in the household is a full-time resident. How do we define resident? Is that tax code resident? Is that being in the, in the community thirty, ninety days? You know, what does that mean? And then there's not, there is a bit of a lack of workforce dedicated occupancy guidelines. In year one through five, it actually ends up at fifty percent because we really do have these other catchalls. If we, if we can't find that preference, then potentially we could go outside of that. And year five to fifteen, we really only have twelve point five percent of really qualifying workforce under the proposed guidelines. Staff identifies that there are workarounds. These could essentially become longer thirty-plus day, short-term rentals that aren't contributing to a sales tax and lodging tax. Also, the examples that have been given, you know, we've done a lot of research looking at Silverthorne and Estes Park and Steamboat, where there have been some subsidies put into the final project. And when we look at the examples and case studies that they brought forward, as far as Durango, Pagosa Springs, and Eagle, those are completely different scales of economy than Lake County, where conceivably, this is one of our most important lodging facilities. And it provides an economic benefit to the community, both through property tax revenues, sales tax, and then supporting a very critical part of our economic base. So this is something that staff would suggest needs to be done in a meaningful way so the net benefit is consistent with our comp plan and, and our land development code and our finding of that it is being supportive and to workforce housing. And that would be not just a five-year commitment, that would be a long-term commitment if we are going to look at rezoning the property and changing the use of the property. Diversity in housing types that the applicant draws out uses Strategy A, but doesn't mention the overarching goal, which is promote the, promote the development of diversity of housing types, providing for residents with different economic and housing needs, giving Lake County employees the opportunity to live affordably close to where they work. So what staff is concerned about at this junction is that potentially that we missed the mark. There is, the applicant was so correct in saying there's one Silver King. There's not a lot of Silver Kings out there. Staff fully agrees and believes that some time and consideration should be given to these quali, the, the qualifying aspects of the occupancy. Are there ways for the county to come in and support the project in a way that ensures that this conversion does satisfy the needs of the community? The need is, is incredible and the, the, kind of taking out of context, the conversation in the housing needs assessment. There is, there is a, the housing consultants really wanted us to know that we should be very mindful of an equal opportunity for our commuters as well as our local workforce. And we, I, I think that we all agree to that, but that doesn't mean that we necessarily reduce in year five our qualifying workforce down to twelve point five percent of the overall occupancy of, of the project. So, you know, maybe in year five, if Climax hasn't chosen to renew their, their lease, then maybe it's a PUD amendment. Maybe we come in back with the planning commission and reevaluate where things are at and we look at how we address the community needs there at that time. But doing it now to change the parameters of the deed restriction and the terms of qualifying for occupancy just doesn't seem to be a reasonable approach. And so what staff would say right now is that we can't yet support findings for approval of this proposal as it is currently. And we're seeking more time to work with the applicant to carve out something that does have the benefit long-term for the community. Again, considering that scale of economy and if we lose a lodging facility that is a critical part of our economic sector. We need to make sure that staff's belief that this housing needs to stay as it's intended, as the applicant is saying that they want to be supportive of the community housing and workforce housing needs of the community. I think that we need to just back up a little bit and take a little bit of time to make sure that we do this right. Again, from the photos and I think anyone that's well acquainted with the property, it is, it is a good facility and we need to make sure that it meets the best use for the, for the community overall. So definitely appreciate the applicant and the development team. And I just would suggest that we have some more work to do before this is actually ready for a decision. And so that would be staff's recommendation is to just take that time. I know the project time is essential to making things work. I think we can also think of like a phased approach as far as the construction and development. Like let's get occupancy and let's look at this in a way that we can do some phased occupancies while you're going through construction so that we can meet those, you know, immediate needs. But we absolutely agree that our, we're not going to build our way out of the situation that we are in. And so this adaptive reuse concept is certainly something that should be considered. But I do suggest that the planning commission and board might want to just make sure that we've taken enough time to make sure that it, it hits the mark and that we don't have any unintended consequences associated with the benefit that we may or may not receive from the overall performance of the project. So any, happy to answer any questions?
I have a couple of questions, I think mostly for the applicant, but if it's, if, if they're not Lake County workforce, or Chaffee County, or Eagle County, or Summit County, who, who are those tenants?
There's a variety of tenants, so I think our goal here is, let's step back for a second. So part of what we want to do is ensure that you understand that when we're thinking about this profit, this process, that we're really trying to ensure the highest percent chance of success. And part of this is conversations we've had with lenders and other folks on the outside that we need to make sure with finances property and moving forward. And there's, those pieces are incredibly important in this, and so we've been continually told that anything over fifty percent i- is really, I, it's kind of a heel breaker in a lot of ways from a financing perspective. We had, you know, there's already, there's already kind of hesitations at no restrictions on it. So part of this, I just want to highlight from the start, is that this is informed by our ability and desire to ensure the success of this project. So I want to make that clear that if, you know, we had incredibly cheap funding and people said a hundred percent, let's go, let's do this, that would change us, it could have the ability to change us. The second piece here is, as highlighted in the economic development reports to Lake County, Lake County is a great place for someone who may want to be a remote worker here. It's an incredibly beautiful place. There's a ton of people here that don't, uh, don't work necessarily in the area, but work remotely. And I see there being a huge demand for that and those people can contribute a huge amount to the economy as well. So we do view that as someone else who would be eligible outside of those numbers. So part of it is really around kind of making sure this, this project is successful and part of it is around just keeping some level of flexibility with the understanding that our number one goal is to sign a long-term lease for a hundred percent of these units to be available in those in Lake County, with hopeful extension for another five years or more on. with hopeful extension for another five years or more on that lease, so that this would be a 10-year, full 100% Lake County workforce housing project. And that is our number one goal right now. With the understanding that we can't fully commit to all these things, given the restrictions to make the deal actually, or the project actually move forward.
Sure. And I think that that's, that's a really good point because I totally agree with you that it's, a master lease is probably the best route for you, and it's the best route for the community. But it's also not a given. And so from, from your perspective and, and our perspective, from the community, I think that that's something that is relevant in the way that's an example of something that could happen. And it may be an intention, but it's not going to be a requirement when this is proposed, or when this is approved, right? So, so from the perspective of that, I think it becomes tough because when you don't have an AMI rule or deed restriction on these units, which I agree with by the way, you can organize and/or manage this building to such a way that the rates are too high to work for local workforce housing. So then you can say, well, we don't have any eligible tenants, so now we have to go to our backup plan. So although I also understand the business side of that, that that's what you're going to have to do, that's where I think the rub is, right? Because the community needs workforce housing. And I think we need a lot of Lake County workforce housing, but also for our commuter base. And I have always been a strong proponent of not attaching that to an AMI. But then if there's this caveat that then like, you could actually rent it to whoever, it becomes really problematic, you know? And it's, and when yours, when yours one through five, I'm totally on board with, but year five, that's seven units out of your 50, not six units. We're talking about seven units maybe will be available to Lake County or Summit County housing, you know, workforce. So to me, that percentage number dropping so low year five would be the rub for me as far as how that goes. And, you know, the idea of a five-year PUD amendment makes a lot of sense because I think not, we've had so many changes just in Lake County in the last five years here. Who knows what's going to happen in the next five years? So I can see that being a really maybe more beneficial. But obviously, you could do that at any point as well. So, but I am in agreement with Ann. I'd love to see you guys all continue to have the conversations and table. I'd be for tabling the application at this time to see where you guys can go with it. But as far as, you know, I know you wanted some feedback from us, that would be mine specifically.
That's exactly the same. Yeah, the 12.5% is worrying.
Any other planning commissioners online have any comments?
Can you hear me, Heather?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry. My iPad is muting on me left and right. Yeah, my concern is, as you said, stated earlier, the qualification five is a non-starter for me. If we can't define that to be better defined, I have significant concerns of the openness of that. I too share the concerns that the percentages dropped dramatically between, after year five. I, I think the concern I have is that Blue Hours' goals could change within five years based on occupancy and need. And we have to really think about workforce housing first. And I just think it is a little open-ended, specifically with qualification five. I can't accept that as it is.
All right, thanks, Steve. Dave or Jason, did you have anything? Commissioners, any questions or comments or?
In the, reading the report, there was a section there saying rental rates are going to be market, market value. And, and my concern would be, you know, what kind of rent controls, pricing controls are going to be in place, if any, to ensure that the workforce can afford these units?
Well, and I think that's it. There's not AMIs attached to this. So there isn't any price, you know, regulation at least proposed right now in this, which I'm actually in agreement with. I, I believe that if you, if, but I only, it only works if you are saying it's workforce, right? Then, then that market's going to dictate itself. If you can't find a worker at your rental rate, you're going to have a vacant unit. So you're going to find a rental rate that a worker can, can rent. And so to me, the economics of that work a little bit better in our town because we have so many people at so many different pay structures that a lot of times when you have the AMI or the price, at least from my experience working with people is, there's a huge gap in the middle. People can't, people get missed, right? And so you have these people over here that, sure, you can meet their income levels, but then these people in the middle can't rent because they make too much. And then they make too little to buy a house. So you end up with this missing piece. Whereas instead, you can, if you have a whole workforce deed restriction, there's not, it doesn't matter how much you make, but you could be dean at the college, or you could be a teacher at the high school, or you could be a firefighter in town, you know, whatever it is, as long as you can pay the rent. And I think the idea with something with studios and one-bedroom units and things like that is there's probably some flexibility in there to have different varying rates. And they would have the option to decide that if, if they have a set number that go to workforce. But if there's a caveat that if they can't rent a workforce, they can rent to somebody else, then that price can be whatever it wants.
Right.
And then that's the problem. So I think that's kind of the feedback that we're giving.
I concur.
Yeah, I, I agree with it because.
Sarah?
Thank you for the presentation and for being here. And I have a question if I've made to Climax or maybe the applicant, but I applaud Climax's purchase feeding in any opportunities to address workforce housing. And I understand Climax's investment in their own properties has been very successful. And you have a full, multiple unit or property. But I also understand that Climax's terms are meant to be temporary to define them permanent housing. So I would like to push and try to understand what the definition is of the temporary or affordable, the terms of this housing. Because if it's only meant to be 120 days for all units across the operation of the project, I'm not sure that that seems a little, I'm not sure that that really addresses the affordability and the needs of the community, especially as you look for or at the retirement population or the disabled population. So that's my first question.
I don't know where Aaron's allowing to speak to from a Climax perspective, so.
So what I can say is that we haven't finalized any sort of lease on our end, but our intent is to not make this temporary. And that's about all I can say of this.
Okay. But that'll have to rely on some kind of perform on your own employee needs, I would suspect.
We're, yes. You know, based on our employee needs. I mean, we don't anticipate it being temporary housing. We anticipate it being full-time, long-term housing.
Okay, for employees and subsidies? I also, I think, I mean, I, I do share a lot of concern in bringing or changing zoning from what we are driving to create economic diversity in our tourism. And I'm afraid, I mean, I don't know what to anticipate the end and the consequences being of reducing commercial lodging on short-term rental or other needs that, of activities in the, in the tourism seasons. I also am concerned about the change in that tax base and that tax revenue generated from commercial to residential. I think once you change that back to residential, we are seeing a lot of conflicting adjacent, conflicting adjacent zoning that is problematic and a large part of the conversation in today's efforts or applications, I suppose, whether that's a commercial application or residential. So I do have concern about changing that. And, and I think it does seem a little disingenuous on the non-subsidized because of that reason. Changing that taxation base is, is, is in my mind, part of that subsidy or that benefit to the applicant. Let's see. I also think that if you do, to build a stronger case on the administration of qualifying folks, I might recommend speaking with the housing authority and the director and using the housing authority as kind of lottery for each of those units, if and when they become available again, allow that entity to exercise the administration of qualifying folks. Let's see, sorry. Online, and I know the online GIS and the access map is not 100% accurate, but it has two parcels currently making up the Silver King property. Is that correct? We're now two separate parcels?
No, it's not correct. There's, there's one. We do have an ILC from Marson Engineering. So we do have a, there, we'll be pursuing an ALTA survey so that we can confirm boundary lines, but it is just one.
Okay, okay.
So, and we do have an ILC.
Okay. And, and another comment. You know, we are creating our guidelines today as we speak for the community. And I do presume and anticipate remote working not being highlighted as a priority because it's just, it seems to dilute the very minimal portfolio and like resources that we have to actually apply to affecting the accessibility of affordable housing in our community. So I do not believe that that would be compelling for me to consider housing remote workers. And I think that's, Amanda?
Yeah, I think the, the point you brought up about that piece of property being changed to residential amongst its commercial adjacent properties is, is a tough one. I mean, I, I remember bringing this up in another application previously is that it's, it's just, we have such limited prime commercial property to be turning it into residential. And we're taking a couple of very prime commercial pieces of property and turning them into residential. And it's just, and I, but at the same time, I totally understand that we have this big housing issue. But I think we have to just be very careful about, if we're going to do it, to me, it has to make sense because it's, we are so limited. We can't make more. There is very few opportunity to make better commercial zones in Lake County with highway frontage. And so to take away highway frontage, commercial lands, and turn them into residential, which does not need to be on commercial highway frontage, it's just, that's a tough, tough thing.
If I can also add to that, I mean, I think it's 4.2% of our property tax revenue is commercial. And so we're needing to build on that instead of reducing it and thinking about all the other little cascading effects of sales tax reduction, which is the primary revenue of the city. Although that's not outside city limits. But we need to think about what variable and how that factors into the county's long-term need.
Any other questions or comments? Did you guys have any other questions or comments?
No, I would just say we, again, appreciate everyone's feedback. I think we knew kind of going in here that the recommendation was to prolong this. I think we had put together our materials and really wanted to showcase what we were doing and put a kind of pace to the project here and hear from everyone in the community, which we really appreciate. I think the feedback has been very helpful to understand. You know, we can incorporate that all into this going forward and our communications with Ann and CC. So I think that was kind of the point of today was just to really get the feedback from everyone and hear all that. And I want to say that our working with Climax has been a huge priority in pushing forward on the project here. I think what excited us most was the master lease there. So I'm, we're, I would say we're pretty close on those components. I won't speak for Aaron there, but that's been a huge push for moving this project forward as well. And, you know.
Yeah. I, I just, yeah, I really appreciate everyone's thoughts and feedback. I think, I really just want to emphasize that our number one goal is to find a way to make this workforce housing, you know, to ensure that the project moves forward. And so as with everything, we're balancing those kind of competing things. And we've take, we really want to take into consideration all of these different pieces, understanding that there is no perfect project. And so like, I 100% think we should, we have to balance all these. And our goal is to incorporate it as many as possible so we have the most compelling project possible. And, you know, we're really committed to making this happen and think there's a huge opportunity to hopefully have 100% of these to Lake County in the short-term longer term through this master lease.
So we have some public, I think, on.
Sorry, one more comment, but I forgot. The, the specifics on the deed restriction, the pieces for the retiree or the disabled, I'm not, I, I would love to kind of, for staff to further discuss that because I'm not certain that it needs. The piece that I am worried about is the having to have worked for the prior four years of, because I'm not sure that, I mean, I don't know that that necessarily meshes with the definition of the retiree. And also, you know, many disabled folks in the community are not able to have worked. So I just want to look at that a little bit.
So that's a model that came to us from Michael Yerman and guidelines that they have in place and in, in Questa Bute. So that was, so it was a model from other community guidelines?
Well, and maybe, I know with Mount Massive Manor, Level Housing Authority managing, or having the authority managing that, you know, there's 26 people on that waiting list, which are 60-plus folks and/or disabled folks. So I just, you know, with, with that many folks on the waiting list for a unit that's, already has 24, 26 units in it, maybe there's a way to better focus on like what the real immediate need is potentially in the community.
We would, and the project would need to look at accessibility and making sure that, you know, everything would be, could accommodate that. But absolutely, and I, so absolutely, we wanted to look at guidelines that were broad enough to help community-wide needs. But that's a, that's a really good point and some good feedback for the applicants, absolutely.
CC, can you change the screen to another thing? We have some public in the middle.
Did you stop sharing?
Do you have any, do you have anything you want to add or questions or anything? If there are anybody on Zoom that has any public comment, we would accept that now. You can raise your hand or potentially unmute if nobody's in any. Lake County Builder Generation.
Hey, thanks. This is Christy Galarza, facilitator of the Lake County Housing Coalition. I just wanted to mention that both advocates of Lake County and Wraparound are using the Silver King quite frequently for transitional housing for homeless folks. And so that's like a resource concern that I would like for you guys to consider. Is, is there an option for this development to work with, with those service providers? Or is Climax take up all, all of those units? Because if so, that might mean less places for our housing insecure folks who are very vulnerable to dying, quite frankly, for, for not having housing.
So really great point, Christy. And we did, we included in our comments in the PUD control doc that, that STAFF did, some availability for stabilization within those guidelines. So we are absolutely recognizing that and continuing that. And thank you for bringing that up. But that was a PUD. But that was a piece that staff included in recommendations on the zoning control.
Anybody else, public, want to have anything to speak, comments? Okay, if there are none, then I will entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Edwards moves to close the public portion of hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I saw both of them on the, so we're good. All right, commissioners, thank you.
I would just mention on the motion for tabling, I've done that for May 13th. Keep in mind, I'm sure the applicant would be very interested in a date certain that, that is quicker than, you know, sooner than later. However, just keep in mind that, you know, if we go out two weeks, or May 13th, that's a little bit more than that, right? We just have to have enough staff time to do a new staff report and have things ready to go. So I think that's just good consideration if you're looking at a tabling motion, that we consider having enough time in there to effectively, you know, go through these negotiations and bring back something meaningful. So maybe we could do that by the 13th. But I just want to, just, just consideration that that would give us, one. Two, it would actually give us about two weeks. That would, that would probably work on the 13th. Because that would give us two weeks for, to work with the applicant, if. And if you have any questions to the applicant, you'd like me to ask them, I'd be happy to do that. So, thank you. Once we close public hearing, then we usually generally just talk between staff and, and planning commission, so.
Does anyone have a motion?
Oh, no motion. Edwards moves the planning commission table file 24-08 to rezoning from business to planned unit development according to the, according to the Silver King PUD zoning control document to be recorded for the approximately 1.5 acre site at 2020 North Poplar, Highway 24, legally described as the southwest one quarter of Section 13, T9S-RADW, to May 13th, 2024, at 4:00 p.m. to allow the applicant to work with staff on issues outlined within the staff report dated April 22nd, 2024.
Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion through.
Thank you very much.
You guys are through time.
We have a motion to adjourn?
Sorry. Edwards moves the real gem to 27.
Do I have a second? Jason, I can't hear you. I see you unmuting, but we don't ever hear you. We just take your unmuted stuff. Okay, thanks. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good night, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, your points were just spot on.